Yes.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Casa Grande's City Council meeting tonight on this May 16th, 2022. I'll call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. I think tonight we have Pastor Kyle Welch from the Compass Church. Mr. Welch, would you mind coming forward to the podium? And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Father, we thank you that we have this opportunity to come together as a city and as a community to seek you, to seek wise decisions, to seek what is good for your people, Father, for we know that everyone in this community belongs to you. And so, Father, we pray that your Spirit would be here, would guide us, would guide us into what is loving toward others, would guide us toward what is wise, would guide us toward what is good, so that this community, this city, would be known as a place where people can find your face and discover how good you are. Pray that you would be with our leaders tonight. Give them wise minds and open hearts. Pray that you would be with our first responders, men and women who put their lives on the line to serve our city, to serve us. Pray that you would give them protection, that you would give them care. Father, in all things, pray that we would love each other, that we would serve each other well, and that your goodness would be evident here tonight. We pray this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Thank you, Mr. Kyle.
I know.
All right, let the roll calls show, Carla's roll call show that all members are present.
So noted.
Next item of business is our minutes.
Okay, minutes. The Mayor McFarland, I want to approve the meeting minutes from the City Council regular meeting, and it's on May 2nd, 2022, as presented. And except for the record, the acceptance of the planning and zoning meeting minutes from April 7th, 2022, also consider the acceptance of the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes from August 10th, 2021. And beyond that, I've rendered the claims.
Second.
Art of a motion and a second. Can I, all those, I get a second, right? Okay, good. Got him planted. Got him paying attention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated April 27th to May 10th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the claims for the May 10th is approved. All right, next is our meeting agenda. Mr. Rains, any changes to the, to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff is asking that you remove item L1 from the agenda, which is the public hearing in consideration of ordinance 1178.398.1 for the major amendment to the Spanish Trails West planned area development. We were notified by the applicant late Friday that they had asked for postponement. We've notified the, a number of the residents in the area as well, and so we're asking that you remove that item this evening.
All right, any other changes? Anybody on the council have any changes?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the meeting agenda is approved as amended. We do have a special presentation tonight. I think I saw Randy here. Mr. Robbins, would you mind joining me down in front here? So, tonight we have a kind of a special presentation. We have Mr. Randy Robbins, who is one of our long citizens here in, in our beautiful city. And I, I just want to read a couple of things that his admirers have put together in terms of some of his accomplishments and things he's done. So, tonight, the City of Casa Grande is proud to present the key to the city, tonight to Randy Robbins for his commitment to our city. He was born and raised in east side of Casa Grande. Randy was a three-sport athlete at the Casa Grande Union High School. Upon graduation from high school, Mr. Robbins attended the University of Arizona on a football scholarship. He played four seasons for the Wildcats and was inducted into their Hall of Fame. In 1984, Randy was the fourth round pick for the Denver Broncos, where he played eight seasons and was a member of three Super Bowl teams, but he didn't win any of them because I was there in Denver watching those teams. And I lost a lot of money, too, I want to tell you. But they were good teams, I will, I will say. I had a lot of fun going to the football games. Mr. Robbins completed his ninth and final season playing for the New England Patriots. Randy finished his career with 13 interceptions, eight sacks, and two touchdowns. That's for a defensive guy, okay? Upon his retirement from the NFL, Mr. Robbins returned to Casa Grande to coach the Casa Grande Cougars from 1996 to 97. In 1998, he returned to the University of Arizona, where as a graduate assistant, he had a full-time running backs coach position. Mr. Robbins returned to Casa Grande in 2003. He spent several years working for Pinal County refereeing local games. 2012, he took the job at Vilago Middle School as a substitute and student support specialist. Casa Grande Union asked Mr. Robbins to come home as their athletic director in 2014, and Randy hired a young and unknown coach in 2015 by the name of Jake Borrow. He mentored the coach Borrow and both his athletic director and defensive coordinator, and we know what happened with that. Congratulations, too, by the way. Where's your ring?
Oh, it's at home.
I saw it. It's over there. I told him, I said, "Don't jump in that pool because you might not get out." Randy served on the Casa Grande Union High School District Governing Board. He's currently, serves on, on the board with me, actually for the Board of Directors at the Boys and Girls Club. In 2021, Casa Grande Union High School football team ran the table, 13-0, which we just discussed, winning the 4A state championship. And shortly after winning the state championship, he decided he wanted to finish on top, so he's retiring, much to our chagrin. Mr. Robbins has made himself available to support his hometown through his career. He's spoken at many community events, assemblies, service clubs. If you want a good, a good motivating speaker, this is your man. It could be your side job.
I'm free.
And I just kind of read, you know, a narrative on Randy's career and all of his accomplishments. His most significant impact on our community really has been his gentle spirit, his kindness. Mr. Robbins embraces his role as a professional athlete and never turned down an opportunity to interact with someone who's asked for a picture or an autograph. When speaking with youth, Randy took the time to get to know them, make them feel like they had a friend. He's touched so many lives. That's why we are giving him a key to our city today. So, we just really want to thank Randy for all the service and everything he's done for the City of Casa Grande. And with that... It doesn't open anything.
Nothing like the mayor putting me on the spot. But first, I want to thank God for everything, for allowing me to be here, because without him, none, none of this is possible. Second, I want to thank the mayor and the council for this award. I am truly humbled by this. I really am. Very humbled by this. Third, I want to thank my, my family and my friends, because, you know, doing the things that I did, you miss out on a lot of family stuff, and they supported me with that. So, I want to thank my family and my friends, because you do miss out on some stuff, and, and them supporting me in that endeavor. And then the last thing, I want to thank the community of Casa Grande. They've always supported me in everything that I've always done, in every endeavor that I've done. This town has supported me, and that's why I've always loved being at home. I will always live here. This is my home. I'm going to die here. And so, this community has opened up its arms to me. And especially, you know, the greatest thing that I ever saw was, you know, December 10th, 2021, is the fans, you know, you guys, Casa Grande showed up. They showed up for our kids, and, and that's why I believe we won the game. So, again, thank you so much for supporting me, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Congratulations again. All right, next, we have our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. So, is there anything council wants to remove from consent agenda?
I just want to add the fact that there's a football team sitting on that side of the room right over there.
All right, does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
No.
Does anybody in the audience who wants to pull anything off the consent agenda? All right, seeing no one, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Art of a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempow?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is item H, which is our public comments portion of the meeting. I just want to remind everybody that I will open the floor up for those who would like to address the council. I would ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes. We will time you and ask you to stop talking at three minutes. So, plan your, plan your, your conversation. And then also, please, when you approach the podium, please give us your name and your address, so for our records. And I do have some speaking cards, and I typically, I'll let them speak first. Howard, when I approach the lectern, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, that was, this is going to be a hard act to follow. My name is Howard Fingerroot. I'm the president of Sunrise Land Group. I represent Sun communities throughout the country and all Sun's new attainable housing projects. I, two things. First, I'm here to introduce myself and to thank you for letting us have a postponement from today, so we can meet with the neighbors, try to understand what their concerns are, and hopefully be able to alleviate some or all of their concerns. So, twofold. One, I want to introduce myself and thank you. Secondly, I want to introduce myself to any of the neighbors that happen to be here, so if they would like to talk after the meeting, or, you know, go outside in the hallway, I'm here to do that. In the meantime, we will reach out and set up a meeting with them. So, when we've done that and we've talked to them, I look forward to being in front of you in the future. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you. All right, next, I have Mr. Kyle Myers.
Kyle Myers, 260 East Quail Court, Casa Grande. Good evening, council. My name is Kyle Myers. As I stated, I own K&amp;M Roofing here in Casa Grande for 38 years. I come before you a frustrated citizen and businessman. I'm going to bring an issue before you that you probably don't know about, that hasn't been brought about you before. I have tried to go through the chain of commands and get a meeting with the city, and it's really frustrating that you can't get a call back from departments, other than your code enforcement officer, Byron Jackson, and Stephen Weaver, the deputy city manager. And I must tell you, Stephen has been exceptional with his communication, and as he gets to the department heads and back with more communication. But I need to get a meeting, an open-minded meeting, to sit down. The issue before you is, we're not on a level playing field in construction business. We have multiple individuals and business people out doing work that aren't even city licensed. They're not state licensed. I'm not asking the city to take care of that. I want them to take care of the regulations that are in place for them to get a city license and their tax ID number, so we all get on a little level playing field. They're paying for the taxes, just like we are, and all the fees and administrative that goes along with it. For me, it seems like a simple request. The regulations are in place for decades. The building department has already done this. I can attest to that for a fact. Back in the late 90s and early 2000s, I brought this before the city. The building department took it right up. Over the years, it's went away, and everybody says, "Business is good. Why do you care?" Someday, business ain't going to be good, and I'm tired of competing against these guys. So, I just want a simple meeting to be able to figure this out. And I must tell you, from Thursday to Friday, two towns, the city of Cooley, town of Casa Grande, Florence, they're on board. It took one phone call to get me a meeting. They're going to be on board with this. City of Maricopa talked to today. They're going to get a department head to do this. Everybody realizes the tax benefit on your guys' side. Then they realize where it's helping me on my side of the table, put me on a level playing field. And most of them have realized that they're helping the community by getting these road contractors that are working under the radar licensed in no capacity. I just don't understand why it's so hard to get a meeting to, to work this out, especially since these adjoining towns have jumped right on board with it. So, that's all I'm here today, speaking to public, and maybe somebody would hear me, and I can just get a meeting to try to, to work through this. There's been some back and forth, and, you know, where the city's involved, I don't know who's telling Mr. Weaver some things, but I take it as a threat. They want a building roofing building permit back. We've already fought that. They didn't think it was a good idea. There's so many logistics, and I know some of the council people have, were involved in that when we did that. I wouldn't be opposed to bring the building permit back, but if they don't have time to go out for a simple request, maybe once a month, how are they going to go out and do eight to 10 more inspections a week? Plus, they're time sensitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Yes, Larry, can we make sure that somebody reaches back out to Mr. Myers and follow up on this issue? Yeah, we need to make sure that all of our contractors are licensed. They have to have city license to operate in the City of Casa Grande, as do all of our businesses. So, we've had this conversation before. So, anyway, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm stopping. Yeah, so I'm being reprimanded because we're not supposed to have any discussion because it's not an agendaized item, but we will have people follow up with you. If they don't, call me. All right, next, Teresa Martinez, our legislative representative.
Hello, thank you for having me. This is, I am Teresa Martinez. I live at 126 East Key West Drive in Vilago. And to Randy Robbins, go Cougars, yay! Class of 86. I just wanted to come up here and just let you know that, as you know, I was appointed to the state legislature in November, so I've been there about four months. I did get three bills passed, all with probably almost unanimous bipartisan support. One was about fire districts and the merger. That's going to protect taxpayers. We had another one to get doctors paid quicker and sooner. And then I had another one to allow city councils like yourself to have more than one general amendment hearing, so that businesses can come in at multiple times. So, if you guys need four hearings in a year, that's up to you. If you guys only want to stick with one hearing a year, that's up to you. Currently, right now, we are in budget negotiations. Our small groups will start next week, I am told. So, any last budget items, now's the time. And I-ten, I was so happy there to vote yes on the I-10 expansion, the $400 million that Governor Ducey was giving before May 13th, May 13th, which qualified us to apply for the mega grant of $300 million that the federal government is doing. I hope to come to more city council meetings when we're out of session, and I also would like to let you know that I am open to office hours. So, if you'd like for me to come down and help any constituent out with regards to if they need help with unemployment, if they need help with any government agency, that would be the time to see me. Of course, my phone is open to all of you, and I know it's unorthodox, but any of those people who know me know I'm a little unorthodox. I'm going to give you my cell phone number. It's 520-709-2311. Those of you who are not writing it down, it's because you already have it. And I want, I want the public to also have it in case they need me. I'm going to go ahead and do something unprecedented and end before three minutes. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, those are all the speaking cards I have, and I know there's some other folks here that want to address the council. So, if you would like to step forward, please do so. Again, remember, it's not an agendaized item, so we can't have a discussion about it, but we can have staff follow up. Please give us your name and your address.
Hi, thank you for having me here. Anyway, Nancy Wood, and I have property at 513 East Vecal Road in Casa Grande. And I came up to speak about the Spanish West, Spanish Trails West subdivision and the issue that we have with, they're asking for the reduction of ages for the community. I came out here as wanting a kind of more rural, quiet area, and I feel that the agreement that was made in 2019 was with the community that, of the houses that were close to the subdivision that's being developed. And they had agreed, and it kind of fit in with the area, that it would be the 55-plus community. And it already has increased the population that would be there that was what was planned before, because it changed from single families to the manufactured homes. And I feel that changing the age now would actually increase the population again more. So, it would be more traffic, more noise. And part of it is that, you know, the development was designed for 55-plus, and I feel that opening it up to the young generation, it doesn't have sidewalks, it doesn't have yards for kids to play in. It really wasn't set up initially as a family community. And I, I have a, a real desire that when developers put in communities, they plan for the kind of communities that are the people that are going to buy there or live there or rent there. And that I feel that they're kind of going back on what was planned, and that I don't think it's always a good fit when you change things that are already designed and built. And they had already started the project, it's almost finished, and now it's changing. And I don't agree with going through this so soon. I mean, it's, it's just, they planned it the way it was, and to ask for the changes, I don't agree with. So, I hope you can consider it when it comes up of, for decisions in the future. I know it's not on tonight, but I hope you consider that I want it to stay as the 55-plus, or the HUD would be the 20%, which would be down to 45. I think most of the people in the community would be open for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
A little taller than I am. Pull the mic. Good evening, everyone. Mayor McFarland, honorable council members, staff, and community members. My name is Janice Pratt, and I live at 425 East Providence Drive. And like Mr. Robbins, I'm going to stay here until I graduate. Spanish Trails West was to be on the agenda, but there will be no vote tonight. It is my opinion, just my opinion, that if a vote were to be held tonight, it may not go perfectly for Spanish Trails West, and here's why. Citizens from College and Palm Park went door to door to get letters of opposition. It took only a few days to obtain the criteria for the minimum number plus half again more to trigger a super majority vote. After signing a letter, most neighbors kept us, kept us in the doorway to share their personal opposition to removal of the 55 age limit. There are seven council members. Councilmember Fitzgibbons must recuse herself because her husband is counsel to the developer. That leaves six. A simple majority vote would be four. A super majority vote requires five. Now, remember my background for who I was married to. I don't understand development that well, but I certainly, certainly understand getting votes. So, what's next? One might think that the developer will meet with the Casa Grande folks, make a deal, and bring it back. However, regretfully, Mr. Howard, I don't think this is going to work. The reason being is that Palm Park and College Park really want to keep the 60, the 55 age restriction. This is not about pretty development, landscaping, amenities, or operational rules, because I'm sorry to say this, but operating rules are not law. And when you get a new manager in, new owner, it's easy to change. So, we can't rely on that. I want you to all know that as council, you have my complete respect, and I have faith that you, together with the Planning and Zoning Commission, will support developers with compatible communities. Therefore, I respectfully request that the developers drop this request. The zoning conditions promised in 2019 must stand. Dropping the request would be the right thing to do. This is not a win-lose situation. This is a win-win. The developers... The developers were great, and they are great, at fifty-five communities. And after this matter is closed, I ask everyone to join me in supporting Spanish Trail's success, and we will all be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else here who'd like to speak to council tonight? All right, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight, and we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is item I-1, Community Services. Mr. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Lincoln Constructors, Inc., in the amount of $166,672.23 to provide construction of approximately 2,500 linear feet of pipe rail fence at Casa Grande Mountain. Staff also recommends an additional budget authority for the project in an amount of $25,000 for city-controlled contingency for unknown issues in the rugged conditions that are present at the mountain site. The total budget authority for this project is just over $190,000. This would be year two of a project that we've been starting to eliminate key access points where off-road vehicles can gain access into the mountain park. This was done by removing the current barbed wire fence and constructing a more permanent pipe rail fence. Because of the vast nature of the park, we're trying to complete this in a phased approach, so we're bringing a little, little chunk at a time every year. The city did advertise for a qualified contractor with an RFP process. Lincoln Constructors was the only submittal. We did do an evaluation period and onsite interview with them, and then recommended a contract today to the council. Again, this would, total budget authority for this project is $191,672.23. With that, I'd stand for questions.
Anyone have any questions? I know, Steve, that's that area, also the backside where we were, what, a year ago, cleaning up? So we used to have, like, telephone poles there, and then they'd just tie a chain around the telephone poles and move them.
Correct. And, and this portion of the fence would be on the east side of the park.
Okay.
The, the part you worked on with our cleanup was on the south end of the park. And, and we've done two sections on the south end, and then this would be the long section on the east side.
Okay, good. I think that'll help. All right, seeing no other comments or questions, then I'll call. Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
Is, is any of that in the close, close enough to the rifle range to be an issue or not?
Yeah, the rifle range would be on the west side of the mountain, so.
Yeah, this is, this is on the, this is on the Arizona City side. Okay. All right, I'll call for an ordinance number, please. Carla?
Ordinance number three-three-three-two. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Lincoln Construction Constructors Incorporated for the pipe rail fence project at Casa Grande Mountain Park, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Lincoln Constructors Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance three-three-three-two as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Next, we'll go to item K-1. Michelle?
Mayor and council, the item before you this evening is seeking to have mayor and council adopt a resolution to set the FY twenty, 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 twenty-three tentative budget per the attached schedules, direct staff to publish notices for purposes of budget tax slash tax levy hearing and budget adoption, authorize action for contingency expenditures, and designate the chief financial officer to submit the annual expenditure limitation report to state auditor general. Over the past several months, staff, management and staff have come together to pull together the fiscal year 2023 budget. Was a lot of deliberation, a lot of hard work, that culminated in the departments presenting their budget to council at a retreat on the thirteenth of April of this year. And what we will be presenting to you this evening is the results of the meetings and the collaboration between staff and management in the presentation of the budget for fiscal year 2023. On the agenda, we have a quick overview of the strategic plan, the tentative budget overview. We'll be presenting the FY twenty-three revenue projections, personnel cost overview, the FY twenty-three expenditure summary, capital improvement projects, and then your budget calendar, that would tell you where we'll be going on from here. The budget was developed under the theme through a renewed commitment and alignment with the long-term strategic plan. We will focus on open communication, teamwork, trust, self-awareness, results, and accountability to improve our community's quality of life, civic pride, and provide quality jobs. And of course, our city's mission to provide a safe, pleasant community for all citizens. The tentative budget overview. The highlights on the tentative budget this evening, we will focus today on the operational and capital improvement program, program budgets. The budget maintains current service levels with slight increases to account for price changes, along with accommodations for much-needed projects and products and supplies. The budget presents a reorganization of the community services department, where three part-time positions will be upgraded to full-time, and the addition, along with the addition of one full-time recreation coordinator position. In this budget this evening, the city made accommodations to find the fund, the five-year computer and mobile technology replacement program, installation of hardware to facilitate expansion of Wi-Fi internet access to the general public and to staff, along with adjustments of the current budget for inflation and price increases in the aftermath of COVID-19. Major assumptions, merit increase of 3.25% for eligible employees, as an average percentage, because in the areas where the steps are between ten and eleven, the merit increases are a little higher than 3.25%. Also, we presented in this budget is an update of benchmark positions based on market analysis, and that's in the total of 1.5 million dollars. This topic will be dealt with by the human resources director in a subsequent meeting. Pension retirement rates. We projected Arizona state retirement system rate at 12.17% and fire and police retirement rates at 12.9 to nine, nine percent to 12.9, and nine percent to 10.19% for police. The issuance of the PSPRS bonds has, in the short term, reduced the city's rates, and hence the reason that we will be presenting in our budget this evening lower cost for the PSPRS retirement city contributions than we have in the past. We have, we anticipating no new revenues, no new revenue items will be presented to, to mayor and council this evening, except for the consolidated fee schedules that present very minimal changes, and that will be dealt with subsequently in this, in this session. General Fund State Shared Revenues for FY 2023. Major state shared revenues are projected at 28 million dollars. Since the preparation of this presentation, however, the state, we received an update from the state that would reflect a decrease of 449,000 in the vehicle license tax projections for an overall reduction of 185,000, which will be accounted for in the final budget presentation when that is done in the, in June, or later in June. Revenue projections. Because of a 16.5 million dollar new con, value of new construction, the city was able to project primary property tax rates lower than they were in fiscal 2022. In fiscal 2022, the tax, primary property tax rate was $1.0148 for a total levy of 4.3 million dollars. In FY 23, the city is projecting a rate of .9643 cents with a total levy of point, 4.4 million dollars. And that is a decrease of .0505 of, of property ta, of the property tax rate. And that would bring the property tax rate to $96.43, $400,000 of assessed value. There was much discussion last year on the primary, on the secondary property tax rate. Mayor and council know that rate, the rate is based on assessed valuation, along with the geo bond debt service that will become due and payable in the upcoming fiscal year. Again, due to the impact of new construction, the city is projecting a secondary tax rate of .3993 cents for a total property tax rate of $1.3636, which include both primary and secondary tax rates. I'm happy to say that of all of these rates, the city still holds just a mere seven percent in the overall tax bill of the penal, of penal county. Major general fund revenue sources, year over year. Again, despite a $158,000 increase in the primary property tax rate, the rate is less than it was in FY 22 due to an increase in the assessed value of property, along with the value of new construction. Local sales taxes, let me see if I could find the pointer here. There we go. Local state taxes, at, in fiscal 2022, they were projected at 26.4 million dollars. We're projecting local sales tax at 28.4 million dollars, and that is net sales tax, which includes tax reduction for the tax rebate based on development, existing development agreements. And that would bring us to a two, two million dollar increase over 2022, and that's conservative. Funds, revenue expenditures, and transfers, transfer summary. The city's fiscal year 2023 budget projects total revenue of 192 million dollars. The city is projecting to receive 5.3 million dollars in state hoof fund, which is highway users revenue fund, and is projecting grant revenue funding capacity of over 21 million dollars for a total of 192 million in projected revenues. The consolidated fee schedule, as I indicated, indicated earlier, that will be dealt with. Roberta will be doing that presentation on a separate item on the agenda. However, let me just say that all departments who charge rates for fees, of that, their, their rates will be represented in that consolidated fee schedule. We also include enterprise and governmental activities and, and services. The rates, of course, are focused on, are focused on fair and reasonable assumptions, and they are based solely on the cost of doing, of performing those services, and all cost of doing business. They are based on providing operating expenses and reserve requirements for wastewater, debt service, and capital requirements, appropriate recovery rate, and customer-based collections and cash, cash flow. The consolidated fee schedule will include animal control, which would be a decrease in that fee, community services, we will be eliminating fees related to the evergreen community, planning and development, we would be adding administrative and building permit fees. For police, we will be adding an incident video recording fee. For public works sanitation, we will be adding residential and non-filled rates, and public works wastewater, adding the word sewer to fee description. Personal cost overview. At the council retreat on May thirteenth, mayor and council asked staff to present apples to apples in the FTE count by year. We did just that. This chart eliminates all part-time, non-benefited, and seasonal positions to present to council total FTE projected for fiscal 2023 at 446 FTEs. This includes nine new positions. Graphic designer for the city manager's office, assistant planner for the planning and development office, recreation department, sorry, recreation coordinator, and three recreation aides moving from part-time to full-time for the community services department. An office specialist, and heavy equipment operator for the sanitation division of the public works department, along with a maintenance worker for the streets division of the public works department, for a total of 446 full-time equivalent positions, not to include non, part-time, non-benefited, and seasonal positions. An overview of the personnel expenditures for all funds. Total personnel expenditure for full-time equivalent positions, that, those are positions that are eligible for participation in the state retirement system is 44.6 million dollars. Included in this number is a decrease of more than 50% in retirement costs, which resulted, of course, in savings used to offset the debt service on the recently issued PSPRS bonds. Debt service on these bonds in FY 23 will be 1.8 million dollars in principal and 559,000 dollars in interest, for a total of 2.3 million dollars. In FY 21, 22, PSPRS rates were between 49% to 68%, with a large portion of those rates being a result of the city's unfunded liability within the system. This situation was addressed, of course, with the issuance of a 63.3 million dollar of excise tax debt, of which 2.1.8 million dollars in principal will be due and payable in fiscal 2023. Healthcare changes for fiscal 23. The city is transitioning the employee benefits package from Cigna to United Healthcare effective July first, 2022. The United Healthcare rates for the planned year represent an overall reduction from policy year 2021, 2022 rates. While there is a decrease in rates due to the transition to United Healthcare, the city's budget is based on current year employee selections that are subject to change with the new open enrollment period. Therefore, the city's projections may not reflect the decrease as calculated based on the rates, the new rates that will take effect on July first. Going to, into, into the expenditure summary. The city's expenditure limitation was set by the state at 248,122,301. The city's budget for fiscal 2023 is set at 253.7 million dollars, of which 56.9 million dollars of that number is excluded from the expenditure limitation. And these exclusions are based on grants revenue, hoof revenue, debt And these exclusions are based on grants revenue, hoof revenue, debt service payments, and prior year approved capital projects. So the city's overall expenditure of $196.8 million does not does not cause an over expenditure beyond the expenditure limitation set by the state. That's my favorite part, fund balance. It is my favorite part because it's not all it it not only present to mayor and council the financial stability of the city, but also the stewardship and diligence that management and staff put into their fiduciary responsibility to manage the city's resources wisely. The city is not sitting on its fund balance. Best practices dictate that fund balance be used for one-time, non-recurring expenditures, meaning that fund balance should not be used to fund new positions or operating expenditures unless these expenditures are one-time items. To this end, the city is projecting to utilize $30 million of fund balance for capital projects throughout the city in fiscal 23. The city is also setting aside the equivalent of 50% of the projected fiscal 23 expenditures plus $5.3 million of PSPRS debt contingency for a total of $37 million in fiscal year 2023. This leaves the city with $21 million of available fund balance that may go toward funding of long-term projects in the future. So here we see we're not sitting on the funds, we're making use of those funds, we're making wise use of those funds on projects that would benefit the community and the people of the city of Casa Grande. General fund expenditures by category. Because the city is a service organization, we understand that the majority of its expenditures is in personnel, which accounts for over $50 million of the total budget and approximately $38.2 million of the general fund budget. Personal expenditures are closely followed by transfers out, which is a good thing. As I indicated earlier, the city projects to spend $30 million of transfer money out of the general fund into the capital projects fund to fund projects that would benefit the city and the community. As you see up here, police and fire backup take up the larger chunk of the city's budget. They are the major service providers within the within the city, and these two departments account for $24 million of the general fund budget. And that's followed, though not closely, by the community services department. Of course, these are service departments. We understand that the city is a service organization, and the city does its best, management and staff, to provide the resources needed by these departments to bring positive change to the city. Expenditures by department. This is an overview of the FY 23 expenditure by department. This accounts for all funds, including capital projects. Under this scenario, we see public works claiming the largest portion of the budget due to the projects that the city has outlined to be funded in fiscal 23 through generated revenues, which is local sales tax, fund balance, and bond proceeds. So we see public works with 100 and we see public works with 118.8 million dollars of that total budget for fiscal year 2023. Capital projects for account for $91.3 million of the of the projected $254 million budget. This means that the city is considering the current growth trend and its position within the county, and is proactively allocating resources for the maintenance, development, and expansion of infrastructure to accommodate future growth. Hence, the reason for us hence the reason for a $91.3 million budget in capital projects. Capital improvement projects. This will give us a brief overview of the capital improvement projects that the slate that are slated to be funded in fiscal 23. Again, the largest share of that budget is capital projects. And public works. I have a dusty time figuring this out. Public public works accounts for $84 million of that of that budget. This includes large projects that account for $14 million in wastewater, $4.2 million in sanitation, and $75.5 million in half-street improvements in the penal tech park, along with $4 million in airport hangar development, and other smaller road and facility improvement projects. So the management and staff of Casa Grande is concerned about this community, and we are doing our best to provide the needed resources to fund the projects that are necessary to keep the city going. We presented here capital projects by fund class. We have special revenue up here that accounts for $8.7 million of the budget. Special revenue funds are used to account for revenues derived from specific taxes, grants, or other restricted revenue sources. These funds include hoof, grant, fund 220 grants, CDBG, and others, other smaller funds. In this group of funds, the city is projecting $8.7 million in capital projects expenditure. On the other side, we have enterprise funds at $21.2 million. Enterprise funds account for activities financed and operated in a manner similar to private business enterprise. These funds include wastewater, sanitation, water, and golf. This fund class has a capital budget expenditure of $21.2 million. The majority of the capital project budget falls within funds specifically designated for capital projects, including vehicle and capital capital replacement, developing development impact fees, and grant project funds. The capital projects fund account for $91.3 million of capital projects, and that includes the $30 million that would be transferred out from the general fund into those funds to facilitate these projects. Next, we have a quick look at our calendar. In June, the staff will be presenting to council the final budget for consideration at a special meeting. In July, the fiscal year begins, the final budget will be posted. For citizen access, they adopted, we will be adopt asking council to adopt the FY 23 property tax levy and rates, the first reading, and the second reading later in July to adopt the final to for the final adoption of the FY 23 property tax levy and rates. Also in June, if there is any, if any increase is being considered, which no increase in property tax that is that would result in a truth in taxation or requirement in a truth in taxation notice is happening this year, so this is not necessary for the city here for the upcoming fiscal year. He dates tentative budget, which is what we're presenting to mayor and council tonight, the publication of the FY 23 tentative budget, property tax levies, and notice of public hearings. First publication will go out on May 24th, the second publication on May 31st. Public hearing on fiscal year budget and property tax levy will be held on June 20th. Special meeting to adopt the fiscal year 23 budget will be held on July 5th, and the budget will be posted to the city website before July 12, 2022. On July 5th, they will have the, we will have the first reading to adopt the property tax levy, and on July 18th, the final reading to adopt the property tax levy. Staff is recommending that mayor and council adopt a resolution to set the FY 2023 tentative budget per the attached schedules presented to council, to direct staff to publish notices for purposes of budget slash tax levy hearing and budget adoption, to authorize action for contingency expenditures, excuse me, and to designate chief financial officer to submit the annual expenditure limitation report to state auditor general. I will pause for your questions.
A pause for a question.
Okay. Mr. Powell.
The wastewater that showed on there, what are we doing with wastewater? That goes back a ways. You could tell me on a later day in the week or whatever if you want. I just was curious if we're compiling money toward accumulating water here.
I, if you could mayor to council member Powell, if you could give us a few minutes, we will get that detail for you.
See how good she is. Go ahead, Bob.
Have it.
Are we going to pause for for this or Angel, can you entertain another question?
Okay, go ahead.
On the numbers that we saw for capital improvement projects, does it, does that include budget authority for the anticipated bond election or issue for November?
The only budget authority that is considered in this in the fiscal 23 budget is authority of $24 million for the fire safety buildings. We considered all of that, but staff realized that by the time that the the vote, the election takes place in November, and for staff to pull all the documents and all of the information that is needed to formulate the indenture for the bonds, it might take us well into the toward the end of the fiscal year. As such, this funding, that funding was not included in this.
But 20, 24 million for fire stations is included?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is.
Go ahead, Larry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to make sure that that's, I believe that it's $24 million in total for the first year's projects that we had recommended to the mayor and council. And my recollection is is that there's $14 million for fire stations and and a million dollars for trails. And we can give you the breakdown for this, but essentially what it would, it would mirror what our bond program would be for that first year is the allocation.
Thank you. That is your question, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, so we need to answer. House member Powell.
Go ahead.
I think.
Here's your answer.
What's that?
We wanted to know in terms of the water restoring.
Do you need a mayor to council member Powell, do you need a breakdown of the wastewater projects?
We're storing water there, and I know it, is that sewer water, or are we getting water from somewhere else, or?
Yeah. Angel, I think he's talking about storing water, which isn't really your department.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor.
Maybe Mr. Ray could answer that question.
Mayor Protim, Pal, I would, I'll give it a shot, mayor, but but certainly there are a number of wastewater-related capital improvement projects in this budget, as as Angel had mentioned, nearly $40 million. That is really consistent of a number of project projects. One of those projects that is being carried over from this fiscal year is our recharge project that where we will be actually recharging our effluent and earning long-term storage credits. So that is one of the projects, but the lion's share of the allocation is is made for solutions to our west side of the community. It's made to expansions at the plant. And lastly, it's made to equalize the amount of discharge that we're allowed through recovery wells, or excuse me, through recharge wells to match the treatment amount that we, the amount of treatment that we can process on any given day. So 12 million gallons a day of treatment, 12 million gallons a day of discharge. But we can certainly provide a complete breakdown of every capital project.
What I was curious about is if we're buying water and putting it in the ground, or I know people are doing all kinds of things with water right now, and it's, it's, some of it's good and some of it's not good. The the desal is terrible, mayor. And and we really need to get on the the pipeline thing to get get the water. You can't put water in in the in both of those reservoirs unless you come from the back of them, which you can't do unless you've got that water coming down on the pipeline. So I know it's, it's really a problem for people right now in trying to get those things together, but the, I, that was my question. You did answer it, Larry. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions for Angel?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but just a comment, and I just wanted to thank you. You know, you guys, you just have so much enthusiasm. I mean, who gets so excited, you know, for for some of these slides?
For numbers.
I know numbers, no, but but seriously, you know, of course, we had our budget meeting, you know, a few weeks ago, and you and your staff are so pleasant, and of course, I thank our staff, you know, we've, we've had a challenging couple of years, but, you know, our city has been in in pretty decent shape considering, and that's because of the leadership that we have here. Of course, you know, your guidance with the departments, you know, the construction sales tax obviously is great, our sales taxes are good. You know, of course, I'm proud because being on the council for several years, we've always, some of my fellow longtime council members, we, you know, struggled raising that property, primary property tax, and we had to do it a couple of years ago. But I'm happy to see that you guys are, that we're bringing it down. You know, we know the assessed values are higher now, so I'm really happy that you remember that it was difficult for all of us to raise that, and so now with the assessed values high, we're bringing it down, so we're, you know, bringing in about the same amount of money, so, but just thank you to staff, thank you to you guys and your enthusiasm and hard work.
Lisa, if I could just fill in on that and give you the credit for it. She's scheduling the same meeting to happen after we adjourn here, so you guys that are excited about it, stay here, we can hear it again.
Hear it.
Angel, do you have a comment?
Council member, this is not work for me. It's fun.
We can tell.
All right, well, good, and yeah, and thank you to your staff, thank you to your staff, Larry, also. I know it's a lot of work for everybody. We started this, what, two months ago, three months ago, three months ago probably now? So it's not a quick process, and it is, your work is appreciated, so thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I have, if I may, I have some more detailed information.
You can quit while you're ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have some more detailed information on the $25 million bond resources for fiscal 23. Thank you so much to the city manager. I had a lapse of memory there for a minute. Mayor and council will recall in fiscal 22, we projected funding for the fire for fire station, and this fire, the two, the 14, $14 million total is set aside from bond issuance to fund the fire stations. We have $5 million for trickle improvement, $4 million for Dave White improvement, and community trail improvements at $1 million for a total of $25 million in bond proceeds funded to be funded in fiscal 23.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments, then I'm going to call for a resolution number, please. Carla.
Resolution number 5419. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the city of Casa Grande for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023, adopting a tentative budget setting forth the receipts and expenditures, the amounts actually levied, and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year, and the amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, and giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adopting of budget and for fixing the tax levies.
Mayor McFarlane, I move approval of resolution number 5419 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Council member Lavender?
Yes.
Council member Huddles? Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Powell?
Absolutely.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, let's move into our public meetings, public hearings. As noted in the, at the start of our meeting, when we approved our agenda, we are removing item L1. So I'm going to move to item L2. This is a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 1178.234.1. Joe and Jacqueline and...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
And everybody. Good evening.
So this item is a PAD zoning request for Hacienda Storage. The location of the rezoned request is just south of Florence Boulevard or State Highway 287 on the east side of Hacienda Road. The current zoning is urban ranch, and in the urban ranch zone, it allows single-family residential development on one and a quarter acre minimum size lots. It also allows agricultural activities. It permits cell towers at a height of 28 feet or under. And with the approval of a conditional use permit, it allows uses such as schools, churches, manufactured home sites, and cell towers over 28 feet tall. Just a little bit of background, currently, this site does have an approved conditional use permit on it for a school, up to 520 students. The maximum height is 28 feet, and setbacks vary depending on use. The request this evening would be to rezone the property, which would therefore replace any sort of entitlement on it, including that conditional use permit for the school, and entitle it to be a planned area development zone. And again, a PAD zone is a customized zone district. It has to be comprised of at least five acres, where an applicant can propose uses and development standards specific for the site. This is an 8.7 acre site that's proposed to be a PAD specifically to allow a storage facility use, known as Hacienda Storage. It would accommodate RVs, self-storage, and then ancillary associated uses. The maximum height proposed is 35 feet, and the setbacks proposed are from the front property line, 33 feet, and then from the sides and rear property lines, it would be dependent upon the building's height. For buildings up to 25 feet, the side and rear setbacks would be a minimum of 15 feet. And then for buildings between 25 feet to 35, there's a typo there in height, the setback from the sides and the rear would have to be the same as the height of the building. Although this evening you're just asked to consider the zoning, the applicant did provide a conceptual site plan to show how a storage facility could look on the site while meeting the proposed setbacks. Here is a rendering of what they provided, where you see basically the buildings inform the perimeter of the site, where between the buildings and the property lines would be the landscaping. One of the advantages to this is it minimizes the amount of fencing, which could sometimes be unsightly. It's between the gaps in the building where there would be fencing provided, and that could be by way of wrought iron or CMU block to provide, the wrought iron would provide some openings to see activity in there, but it could also be CMU block to bridge the gaps in the buildings. They did provide conceptual elevation detail. The large building that you see adjacent to Hacienda, in this conceptual plan, would only be 12 feet in height, and the length of the building would be broken up by staggering the height slightly as viewed from Hacienda, and it basically would look like a long CMU wall. And then the tallest building, at least conceptually, on this plan is a 22-foot-tall building, and what you see here is the view of its front elevation. And then these are conceptual side and rear elevations. Tonight, city council is just asked to consider the zoning, going from urban ranch to PAD, but there would be other steps included should you vote to approve this zoning. The next step would be the major site plan would have to be submitted and considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that major site plan comes traffic impact analysis and engineering reports such as drainage and water and wastewater. Should the zoning and the major site plan be approved, then the final step would be to submit for site development permitting and associated public improvements that would be tied to the project, namely, that area of Hacienda Road that's abutting the site. The applicant would be required to dedicate 55 feet of right-of-way and have to make certain public improvements, including its widening of Hacienda, public sidewalk curb gutter and street lamps adjacent to the site. When reviewing the planned area development zone change request, it's subject to these criteria, and the staff report goes into these in greater detail, but I just want to highlight the items on the screen here. The first one is the interrelationship of the plan to different elements on and off the property. So that basically deals with compatibility. As you see, the subject site is directly east of Mission Royale, where that is predominantly PAD accommodating single-family homes. To the north of the site, you have large lot, single-family home sites. To the east, you have farmed ag land, and to the south, you have an ED2 substation. So, you know, really, the compatibility concern largely is for the properties to the north and also the single-family home sites on the other side of Hacienda. So the way that they're dealing with the compatibility is providing for a landscape buffer, as I showed you on the conceptual plan on the previous slide, by providing at least 15 feet between the north building and its property line, and at least 15 feet from the east buildings and its property lines, as well as to the south. From the, between the property line and the buildings along Hacienda, there would be at least 33 feet of setback in landscaping. This coupled with the fact that they would have to do right-of-way dedication of 55 feet to make Hacienda Road a total of 110 feet, coupled with 50 feet of tract that exists between Hacienda and the back of the lots in Mission Royale, that totals a distance of about 193 feet between the back wall of the lots in Mission Royale and the first building at the storage facility, which is proposed, that particular building there is proposed to be about 12 feet tall. So staff feels that with the landscaping setback provided, that helps minimize any negative impacts that could be resulting from the storage facility. And then again, they did provide some example elevations. We would get specifics more at the time of the major site plan. However, the PAD does provide some architectural standards that calls for a mixture of building materials. So you would see a combination of CMU, metal panel system, glass, et cetera. One of the other criteria that we look at is conformance with the general plan. So this area is within the Casa Grande 2030 neighborhoods land use designation. Now, neighborhoods largely accommodates for single-family development. This area doesn't have certificates of assured water supply, however, so it's not likely that this huge area that you see on the screen will develop into single-family neighborhoods. What's likely is you're going to see uses such as storage facilities or commercial businesses and multifamily. There are certain parameters in which those uses can develop in the neighborhoods. A commercial site can't exceed 30 acres, and a multifamily site can't exceed basically 25 acres in size. RV and self-storage here is a use that can benefit the adjacent growing neighborhood, accommodating storage needs of the residents. And that would seem to address the fact that our general plan describes neighborhoods as a variety of interconnected residential developments with thoughtfully placed non-residential uses that offer neighborhood-level amenities and services. Self-storage is allowed in only a limited number of zone districts, such as B4 and I2. If they were to request B4 or I2 here, although it would be appropriate per staff and planning commission's position for self-storage, B4 and I2 really wouldn't be appropriate for all the other uses that you would find permitted in those zones. That's, you know, that's a heavy commercial or heavy industrial zone. And so to address that fact, a PAD is much better suited, because it can be specific just to the storage use. It can be tailored with setbacks and specific uses, ruling out any other of those less compatible uses that you'd find in those other zone districts. The, one of the goals of the neighborhood's general plan land use designation is to minimize land use conflicts. And so one of the action steps is to require physical separations such as fences, berms, parks, or landscaped areas between residential and non-residential developments. And as I mentioned, you know, they're proposing a landscape perimeter between the buildings and the property lines on all four sides. The greatest landscape perimeter is provided along Hacienda at 33 feet. Another criteria that we look at is impact of the plan on anticipated traffic. So one of the largest concerns is the fact that Hacienda is seeing quite a bit of traffic. The Mission Royale neighborhood has, on the north side that's active adult, has built out, and the family community south of Early, who uses Hacienda as its primary point of ingress and egress, is rapidly growing. So there has been a lot of concern about the traffic on Hacienda, and it will probably see even more traffic as the Mission Royale family community continues to grow. One of the benefits to development along Hacienda is that there'll be half-street improvements as each of those sites go to develop. So as I mentioned on a previous slide, when this site goes to develop, we'll see 55 feet of right-of-way dedication, an additional lane added, curb gutter sidewalk, a turn lane. So it, you know, specifically for the traffic coming and going from this site, it will be handled, and then incrementally, it will help contribute to the need to improve Hacienda as other sites go to develop in the future. At the time of the major site plan, a traffic study will be provided, and this will determine the amount of trips generated for this use and how it affects the level of service, namely, the whether or not a stoplight will be needed at Florence and Hacienda. So we haven't received that TIA yet, that would come with the major site plan, but whatever its findings are and recommendations are, will be incorporated into that plan.
Can I ask you a question, or?
Sure.
Hacienda needs to be paved all the way to Sylma. And we talked earlier about the streets getting full and trying to get around, and that's one of the things that would really help, is that you're on the other side of I-10, and you could get to where you want to go faster if Hacienda was, and for, we've got people down there that our equipment has to pick up trash for and do those kinds of things that are in the city of Casa Grande, but they, but this is a heck of a way, and also, there's a fire department going in there, right? And so you want the fire engines to be on pavement, not down a dirt road, which is what it is now, but that, you really need to look at paving Hacienda.
Point noted.
All right.
And the other thing that this site will accommodate for is two access points, as proposed. Their primary access would line up with Hancock Trail on the other side of Hacienda, and then they do have a secondary point of access down towards the south of the site that would be exit only. One of the requirements that I've mentioned is right-of-way dedication, which would be 55 feet. I do want to clarify that actually in my staff reports and in my previous presentation in front of Planning Commission, I had recognized this incorrectly as a principal arterial, but that is an error, because on the west side of the section line, on the side of Hacienda that's already improved, that's 55 feet. And so to match that, there would be 55 feet on the east side of the section line, and I had inappropriately classified it as a principal, where they would need a 70-foot dedication. But nonetheless, one of the recommended conditions of record is that the property owner shall dedicate this necessary right-of-way, as typically required at the time of major site plan. However, it shall also be provided, should the city require it earlier, if requested by the city, to address one of your concerns, Councilmember Powell, if there does need to be improvements to that road sooner than later, this is the way we're able to get that right-of-way.
Thank you.
Regarding the public notification process, it did meet the requirements set out by code. Staff did receive a number of comments, and those are indicated by the stars on the map. The property owner to the north talked with me, as well as the applicant, and he never expressed objection. His main concern was whether or not there'd be chain link fencing. He was opposed to that, that was his primary concern. And as I've discussed, there won't really be fencing on that side, between the building and the property line would be landscaping. And then a number of Mission Royale residents did provide concern, including lights and glare from any illumination on the site, including signage. Traffic, as I discussed briefly on the previous slide, they felt that Hacienda is already too busy and a signal light is needed. Traffic for the storage facility could potentially avoid the making turns at Hacienda and Florence and go through the Mission Royale neighborhood to utilize the signal light that's at Mission Parkway in Florence. And so there was a concern about that. They were concerned that the buildings would be too tall, the hours of operation, and concerns that the site will be misused and the self-storage spaces will be potentially lived in. So again, some of the ways that their concerns are hopefully addressed or met is that there is a 193-foot distance between the proposed storage buildings and the backs of the lots at Mission Royale. That provides a formidable barrier in terms of a lot of the potential negative impacts. Although the height can be as tall as 35 feet, they're proposing, at least in their conceptual plan, buildings no taller than 22. And if they end up being... And if they end up being taller than 25 feet, they have to meet, you know, a greater side and rear setback than provided. They have updated their PAD to address illumination and signage concerns. Any freestanding signage will be limited to a monument-style type of sign up to 10 feet of height. And at the time of major site plan, there'll be additional emphasis on the types of signage that they're providing, particularly on the walls, because that could be a potential concern. We really don't want the neighbors to be impacted by brightness from the signs, so the applicant is aware of that, and we will look at that more closely at the major site plan level. Regarding the traffic on Hacienda, it is designated to be a high-capacity roadway. Ultimately, there'll be two lanes in each direction with a two-way left turn lane in the middle.
All the way.
But ultimately, a storage facility is known to be a relatively low traffic generator, and certainly a much lower traffic generator than if it were to remain urban ranch with the approved conditional use of a 520-student school. So this will help with the, in terms of all the possible uses that can be developed here, this is a relatively low user for traffic. And then, again, potentially additional traffic signals will be installed when one is warranted by means of a developing parcels traffic statement. And then, of course, Florence Boulevard and that area is controlled by ADOT, so they would, they would have to participate in that decision. At its April meeting, Planning Commission unanimously voted to forward to City Council a recommendation to approve this zone change request, subject to the condition of record I mentioned about the dedication of right-of-way. And I, that concludes the presentation.
Questions, anyone?
Just to be clear on the right-of-way dedication, the road wouldn't be built until some point in the future, because I'm also worried about the road going north because there's residences there. So it looks like they would have to dedicate, obviously.
There's a lot down south, too.
Yeah.
That needs to be.
But we're not building the road now, just the right-of-way, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman.
Are they building the half?
So at any time with this condition, there would be the ability to dedicate the right-of-way, but that, you're correct, there wouldn't necessarily be the roadway improvements. But at the time of the construction of the storage facility, they would have to do roadway improvements abutting their site. But it does get tricky when you have to transition from areas north and south that aren't developing. So they're gonna, they would have to do a combination of striping and basically scalloping the road so it transitions back from what would be a two-lane north and south to a four-lane, you know, ultimately.
Just a comment. You had mentioned, and I know that people have been really concerned about the Florence and Hacienda intersection, and I know that we all have known about some of the crashes and fatalities that have taken place there. Anyway, was, has there already been talk started with ADOT? For some reason, I recalled that there might have been about, you know, the concerns that citizens had about having a light there. Has that already not started at some point?
Councilwoman McBride, there have, there have been a number of discussions that have taken place related to signalization of that particular intersection. Much of it is being driven by the warrants to actually install the light and the traffic signal itself. And so I know, Kevin, I don't know if there's any more detail on that today, but ultimately we're relying on the analysis that's been done to determine when we reach that point and actually which development may be responsible for installing it and the appropriate share of the costs associated with the construction of that light.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right, then, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to anybody who might be here to speak about this. Is there anyone here? Go ahead. Give us your name and your address and...
Stephen, can you open up the applicant presentation? I have it in the drive.
Mayor McFarland, Chair members, I am John Gillespie. I represent the property owner. I'm with the law offices of Pewin Lake, 1744 South Val Vista in Mesa. Happy to be here tonight. I thought James did a great job covering a lot of the considerations with this site and this development. We are a zoning case tonight. We'll go back through major site plan to work out some of the specific details that are, have been, have been raised by neighbors, and I think we'll go through that process with your P&amp;Z. I want to be respectful of your time tonight, so I don't want to take up any more time than I need to. I'd love to be able to maybe reserve some time if anyone has comments from the public to address or, and I'm here to answer any questions for you. I'll go through this just quickly. The, what Casa Grande's getting from this proposal is they're getting a storage use that is in high demand for residents. It will improve the quality of life of our residents here in the city. The PAD is a specific zoning tool that the general plan foresees that, in this area, to limit the uses just to a, to a specific gamut of what we can do there. So it's not a blanket commercial zoning or industrial zoning, so we know what we're going to get at this site. We do have a desirable site plan. It is conceptual at this point and will be, the details will be hammered out in the future, but it really conceptualizes, let's put buildings around the perimeter, the RV parking interior to the site. The elevations are a nice mixture of materials, and I think the architects are doing a good job on that. And then, just in terms of the traffic and concerns, we will do a traffic analysis with the major site plan, and we will take our share of improvements to this street and to the light, if that's what's warranted. I do think it's, this is some preliminary research that I did just with our IT that just kind of shows that the, the use is not seen as a big traffic generator. Noise and light, we'll have to comply with the standards of the city, and we have some stipulations in the narrative that talk about signage sizing, and we work with staff on that. And I just encourage you to follow the recommendation of planning staff. They've done a good job on this, and the P&amp;Z who's recommended your approval. And I'll answer any questions if we have any.
Mr. Powell?
I just would note that a lot of the people are on Selma Highway on the south side, and there's quite a normal, or quite an area of people that live out there. And they're really upset because there's a dirt road you can go all the way down to on Selma Highway, or you could get on the pavement once you pave Hacienda, and it takes you right down to Selma, which is going to be, it's going to be an arterial in the future because it's just another way to get around Casa Grande and not have to drive through it and have these kind of issues going. So I think the people around there that use it are going to be, going to put you way up there if you can get that paved. They've waited for a long, long time to have the pavement done.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Powell, and I think it's great to see that some development is happening on this site that will contribute to improvements on Hacienda. And as Member Lavender had alluded to, we will defer to staff on safety considerations for how those improvements are put in, and I think we're contributing to making Hacienda a better, better street.
But Hacienda would not be, would be something that your group would be happy to look at, the importance of paving it.
So, Member Powell, my, my take on that would be that the development needs to bear the cost that it puts onto, onto the infrastructure. And so in terms of, I don't know if you're asking maybe if the developer would be willing to pave up and down Hacienda more, more than our site, that would be not typical for a development of this size to trigger that type of improvement. But certainly, the impact that we are causing will...
It's all right. You're going to do your section, right?
We'll do our section.
You're going to do your part, okay. All right, any other questions on this?
Just to tag on to that, what's going to hurt you on your section is, is it goes down to Selma.
No, it doesn't go down that far. He's, he's just, he's just up by Mission Royale, on the north part.
Yeah, but you're south of it, aren't you?
No.
We have eight acres, Mayor Powell, so we're eight acres.
When you drive out of there the other day, you drive at the south end of it.
No.
The majority of our users would be expected to come from Florence onto Hacienda.
There'd be some that would come down Florence, but if they had a road that was Hacienda, they would go from Florence all the way through.
Certainly a possibility to go, go south or come from the south, correct? But our site is an eight-acre site, so our, our stretch of frontage along Hacienda is quite limited compared to how big that stretch is.
We appreciate your input, so thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to address this matter? All right, James, thank you for your thorough explanation. Can I get, Carla, can I get a, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 1178.234.1, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to planned area development on property located generally south of the southeast corner of Florence Boulevard and Hacienda Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.234.1 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
No, I'm going to get, I'm going to get the people that live out there with you guys so you can see what needs to be done on the paving. But, but I will, I will talk to them and we can get, you can meet with them at a future time, but that, and then with, you have a fire station out there. You've got to be able to get heavy equipment out on that road quickly, and that's one of the things that would get them to a fire site quicker either way. So as I say, I will, I will get with you.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next item is item L3.
Have you been down that road, Hacienda, all the way to Selma?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Michelle Horn is requesting a zone change from urban ranch to general industrial, I2, for approximately 204 acres of land generally located north of the Quartzon Road alignment and west of the Burris Road alignment. You can see it highlighted in yellow on the screen. It's just north of the Frito Lay facility.
And that's adjacent to our wastewater treatment plant, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just to the west of it.
To the west.
General plan has it in the manufacturing industry category. The current zoning is urban ranch, as mentioned. Proposed zoning is I2, general industrial. When looking at the review criteria for a zone change, we looked at it's in conformance with the general plan. We cover the three items on your screen. All has been covered in your staff report, so we're just going to concentrate on one item tonight, and that's our general plan goal in our manufacturing industry category. AMI 5 is to encourage appropriate and responsible industrial development in appropriate locations, which this site does represent an appropriate location and is an expansion to our manufacturing industry category and our industrial corridor. One thing I do want to point out tonight that is, the site is impacted quite a bit by our flood zone. It's in our 100-year flood zone. We're not sure of that elevation now, but when they go to develop the site, they will come up with a strategic plan showing what elevation is impacted by the flood, and then you can, you do have the ability to still develop this site, you just have to raise up the buildings one foot out of that floodplain. So there is still development opportunity on the site. In regards to notification, we met or exceeded all requirements by the city code. We did not receive any comments on this particular item.
Yep, good.
In conclusion, the Planning Commission on a 6-0 vote recommend the City Council approve the zone change request, DSA 2200001, from urban ranch to general industrial with the following conditions. Again, that's our standard condition for a right-of-way request. I'd be happy to clarify any items that you guys might have questions on.
So the right-of-way would be West Quartzon, basically?
They also have some on Burris, and depending on the development and what they do, there may be additional right-of-way, but you, we do have some Quartzon and Burris.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. This is on item L3. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? All right, seeing nobody jump up, then I'll close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.423, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to general industrial, I2, on property generally located north of the Quartzon Road alignment and west of the Burris Road alignment, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.423 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is L4. This is really just changing the term length on our Board of Adjustments, so who's going to speak on this?
I am.
Jacqueline? Go ahead.
And then there was one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Next item on the agenda is a zoning code text amendment regarding the Board of Adjustments. This request is to amend Section 1708080 regarding the membership of the Board of Adjustments and to modify its membership from four years to three years. The reasoning behind this is to change this to be more consistent with the city's boards, commissions, and committees. As you know, the city's in the process of revamping its boards, commissions, and committees, and this is making it more consistent wherever possible. So that Planning Commission made a favorable recommendation to City Councils for adoption of the proposed ordinance amending Section 1708080.
Yeah, just to remind everybody, we had this, we had a study session on this, and we talked about all the boards and kind of making them consistent where we could. We weren't able to do that on all of them, but this was one that we could change from four to three years. So any other comments or questions on it? Anybody have any? Okay. And thank you, really, to Paul and all you guys for getting this done. It's, it's really kind of coming together, and I appreciate all the work on the boards and commissions. So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor on L4. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, then I will call for an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1397.17.56, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending Section 17.08.080, membership of Chapter 17.08, administration of Title 17, zoning of the City of Casa Grande municipal code, to change the term length of the Board of Adjustment members, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1397.17.56 as presented. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1397.17.56 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next item is L5. Again, another public hearing. This is for ordinance number 1397.17.57. Again, this is a part of our reorganization for our boards and commissions. Go ahead, Jaclyn.
Yeah, so this is a zoning code text amendment regarding the Historic Preservation Commission. And similar to the previous text amendment, it's revamping its boards, commissions, and committees to make them more efficient. And one of the proposed changes is to span the Heritage Committee and include their duties regarding the naming and renaming of city facilities into the Historic Preservation Commission. So, this amends 17.07.170, duties of the Historic Preservation Commission, and adding Section 17.62.145, procedures for naming and renaming of city facilities. Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation to city council for adoption of the proposed ordinance amending Section 17.08.170 and creating Section 17.62.145.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Seeing no questions from here. This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the floor to item L5. Anyone here like to address the council on item L5? All right. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and we'll call for an ordinance number, please. Go ahead. Go ahead. Carla.
Ordinance number 1397.17.57. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, disbanding the Heritage Commission, amending Chapter 17.62, Historic Preservation of Title 17, zoning of the City of Casa Grande municipal code to add a new section describing the process for the naming and renaming of city facilities, amending Section 17.08.170, duties of Chapter 17.08, administration of Title 17, zoning of the City of Casa Grande municipal code to add additional duties for the Historic Preservation Commission, establishing a procedure for the approval of the minutes from the final Heritage Commission meeting, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1397.17.57 as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next is L6, public hearing. And this is considering approval of a resolution adopting our community development block grant. Ms. Allen? You can start without it.
Staff is recommending the approval of the proposed program year 2022, CDBG Annual Action Plan, based on an estimated allocation or on an allocation of $446,257. We had anticipated a funding allocation of $475,000, but we got less this year. So, the allocation amounts were amended in the annual action plan that was attached to the request for council action. So, in preparation of this year's annual action plan, we held a public meeting at the Mondo Anaya Center Seeds of Hope on March 2, 2022, and 11 participants were in attendance. This public meeting notice was published in English and Spanish in the Dispatch and on the city website on February 12, 2022. Comments and discussions during the public meeting were related to wellness clinics, sidewalk improvements, computer labs for employment, transitional housing for victims of abuse, ADA ramps, rental and utility assistance, code enforcement, and owner-occupied housing rehab. CDBG application period was open from March 3 through March 25. Applications were posted on the city website and emailed to agencies per request. Upon review and evaluation of all submitted applications, the review committee is making the following recommendations to be included in the program year 2022 Annual Action Plan, which has been modified with the new funding amounts. As you know, CDBG National Objectives is to benefit low-to-moderate income persons, aid in the prevention and elimination of slums or blight, and meet a need having a particular urgency such as urgent need. So, this year, we are recommending to council that we provide up to $66,000 for public services. Oops, I gotta go back the other way. We would like to fund Seeds of Hope, a senior connections program, for $16,920. The Boys and Girls Club for their Langcola Summer Program, which would only be for the month of July for this funding, because it doesn't start until July, for $4,725. The Casa Grande Police Department to continue their homeless intervention program at $6,615. The Opportunity Tree for their creative aging program for $7,560. Community Action Human Resource Agencies for their homeless services for $14,100. And Against Abuse for the Casa Grande Housing and Support for Abuse Victims. Against Abuse is also including money to partner with Casa Grande Elementary School, Casa Grande Alliance. For any folks that come into their network there that need support with housing or emergency shelter, they've worked out a collaboration to work together to fund them, to get them emergency help. We also want to work on Cruz Park. There's some sidewalk that doesn't connect over there where the Seeds of Hope and the park are. So, they'd like to- Public Works is requesting funding to complete that sidewalk project and also to consider working continuously on the West Park sidewalk, because this year, we were only able to fund one section of it. So, they're asking for $130,000. Our program for owner-occupied housing rehab is asking for $93,882. Continue with our code enforcement officer at $66,194 and planning and administration at $89,251. That has a max of 20% of the annual allocation. We did, I did receive, we did post the proposed plan online. And I did receive one comment. Somebody was asking about if we could fund a park at Colonial del Sol. And unfortunately, that's not city, it's county, so I referred them to the county. But that's the only comment I've received in relation to our plan. I just wanted to show a few pictures. This is the Opportunity Tree. They do a creative aging program. That's the one where they go down to the Art Mobile Downtown, and they focus on art projects, trying to teach letters and colors and kind of everything where it correlates. So, we were fortunate enough to go down there and see their program in action. So, this is Billy. He agreed to take a picture for us. He's very happy. So, he painted that apron. And that day, they were there working on a different art project. So, they keep bringing them back. This is Seeds of Hope, their senior connections program. They have their sewing machines out. And this is a day that we also went for a site visit, and they were playing bingo. And we were happy to see that there were males in the group. So, we were very happy to see that. This is the sidewalk, the West Side Sidewalk Improvement. I happened to go out and take a photo of it the day, and there was a lady already walking. So, and then, the Cottonwood Garden Streetlight Project has been completed, so I just thought I would highlight that. There were 10 solar lights put out there. And we have several infrastructure projects still underway. The Rotary Park, that's just taking a little longer than expected. And Dorothy Powell Senior Center, they have removed all of the old flooring, put the new flooring in, started the bathrooms, but they're having issues with supplies. So, hopefully, they'll finish that soon. And then, of course, you see the City Hall ADA improvements out there. And any questions, just let me know.
Anybody have any questions? Mary? Okay. Thank you, Mary. All right. This is a public hearing. So, I'm gonna open the floor to any comments that anybody might have. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll call for a resolution, please, Carla.
Resolution number 5418. A resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2022 Annual Action Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5418 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Carla?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next item is item L7. Again, a public hearing. This is adopting and declaring public records our consolidated fee schedule.
Stephen, do you have a presentation?
Steve, you need some help over there? Pacing himself?
I'll make this very quick, too. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Go ahead and start.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. Staff recommends that Mayor and Council approve the city's consolidated fee schedule that will be effective July 1 of 2022. As it was highlighted in the tentative budget schedule, there are fee increases to animal control, or actually, fee decreased animal control for unaltered cat. And there's also community service fee to eliminate the fees related to Evergreen Community. Planning and development added administrative and building permit fees. Police added incident video recording fee. Public Works Sanitation added residential landfill rates. And Public Works Wastewater also added the word sewer to the fee description, and that would be for billing. Also, we have, I would like to let you know that, per the Arizona revised statute, we went ahead and posted a public notice to raise various consolidated fees for the schedule of 2022, 2023 fiscal year, was posted to the city's website and all social media outlets on February 17 of 2022. A notice of intent was posted on the city's website and all social media outlets on April 14 of 2022. The effective dates for these 2023 consolidated fees, which are posted on the city's website, will be July 1, 2022. Airport consolidated fees will actually be presented on June 20 of 2022 at the council meeting.
Okay. Yes.
Roberta, remind me what the incident fee is for the police?
The police incident fee is-
Isn't it a record?
Yeah, it's $35, and it would be actually to-
To retrieve?
To retrieve the videos for the body cameras, in conjunction with Axon.
That just seems extremely low for what I would think the process to go through something like that. Obviously, I'm gonna vote for it tonight. I think that's something we may wanna reconsider, especially as maybe on an hourly rate for what it would cost our legal, as well as our police, to do something like that.
Because it has to be redacted and all the other good stuff, too, doesn't it? Or is that done before, anyway?
Last year, we actually did include a fee for redacting for PD. We did include that for last year.
So, it's in there in addition?
Yes. This is in addition.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, specifically on a non-commercial request, we cannot, the city cannot recover fees associated with labor or it's simply materials that are necessary to produce that particular video.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this again is a public hearing, so don't go away. Is there anybody in the audience who would have a comment on item L7? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And I'll call for a resolution number, please, Carla.
Resolution-
Now you can go.
Resolution number 5420. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting and declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled fiscal year 2022 to 2023 Consolidated Fee Schedule, effective July 1, 2023, authorizing the city manager to provide for the temporary reduction of rates and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 5420 as presented.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. That concludes most of tonight's business. We have reports remaining. So, I just wanna thank everybody and staff for all your work tonight. Thank you. Mr. Lavender, we'll start with you.
Well, Steve, you're not off the hook yet, right? Before, Steve- All right. Well, before I start, and hell, and Roberta, I wanna congratulate you on the distinguished Budget Presentation Award that you- I've known Roberta from a long time, since she worked for the school district, and I'm proud of the work that she's done, as well as your department. Congratulations. Mayor, I know last week you were traveling to Washington, DC. And one of the many things that I admire about you is your commitment to your family. And while you were gone, your granddaughter, Dylan, was put on our B-wall. And so, you weren't able to be there because you were representing all of us in Washington, DC. But I want you to know that you were there in spirit, and your granddaughter certainly represents you. And she's an extraordinary student at our school. And we're looking forward to another ceremony this Thursday. And Bob, Mr. Huddleston's gonna be out.
Oh, excellent.
On Thursday as well. So, congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
You have a beautiful family there.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Kay? Donna?
A couple things. This is National Police Week, so if you see any of our local law enforcement, please thank them for their service. Also, the Elks Lodge is going to be hosting the Run for the Wall. Veterans are gonna be making their way across country. They'll be in Casa Grande on Wednesday about 6 o'clock. And the Elks is gonna be hosting some dinner for them. And they're on their way to Washington, DC for the Vietnam Wall. The last thing I have is I just wanted to mention, we've had quite a bit of graffiti in town the last month or so, and including on the wall that's being built out at the park for the veterans group. And hats off to the police department for trying to get that taken care of and doing some surveillance out there. And also, Juvenile Court's gonna be helping do the wall cleanup and paint that. And I just really, for the community, if you see something, say something. It is not something that the city can do by themselves. And if you see somebody doing something like that, please, please, make sure you call so we can take care of it, because this is just not who we are. This is not acceptable in Casa Grande, and we need to get a handle on it now. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Matt?
Thanks. Just a short one tonight. We were with the Youth Commission all day, all morning Saturday until about 1:00 PM. We interviewed 11 returning members and 27 prospective members, which is our biggest one that we can remember. We're 16 seats, so it was very tough. The Youth Commission votes on who gets to be on the Youth Commission. As always, it's solely driven by the youth, everything we do in our commission. So, they had some tough decisions to make, and they'll be getting the letters out in the next week or so, thanks to Carla, who's helping me as always. And then, I got the opportunity- And then I got the opportunity, they had the Garden of Sunshine Memorial that evening, and then I, I got the opportunity to go out to the Panal Forty Gala, which supports a lot of our locals' scholarships and football team and stuff, and that was quite an impressive event. I'm sure you heard more about it, but it was a lot of fun, and Lone Star played, and it's really neat to have that, you know, helping our community.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Powell?
I'm just so happy to be here, Mayor. I don't care if you go another hour.
I do.
We do.
I think it might have a mutiny if you did that. Lisa?
You're just so energetic today. You're so feisty today, too. Not a whole lot, but I did want to, the Faith Alliance Deputy Chief Leos, as I've mentioned to you guys before, has been very proactive and with our group on the homeless, and specifically the immigrants that are coming over. So he wanted to make sure that, you know, the Faith Alliance is going to be able to help out with the, the U.S. Title Forty-two COVID health legislation is expiring on Monday the twenty-third, and so that what that means is that the immigrants are no longer sent directly back to Mexico. So the Border Patrol will be releasing some of the immigrants into some of the communities. So he has a relationship with the LDS Church, and so the LDS Church is when, if they are released in the City of Casa Grande, he will be contacting them, and they're going to take them up to Mesa to the International Rescue Mission before they, because they have a notice to appear until they get, you know, able to appear. So the request from him, the police department, is if there's any other churches or any people that would like to volunteer to be on this list, that way, when, if, when and if people are released in our community, there is, there are people that the police department can call, and they can transport them to Mesa until their notice to appearance. So just wanted to put that out there. If you are involved in any church, any organization, or you personally would like to be on this list, Deputy Chief Leos and the chief are looking for those partnerships, so. And then, other than that, just, you know, this is the time for graduations, and I'll tell you, I'm sure you guys have seen this, you know, we've gone two years with no graduations for many people. One of my kid, you know, two of my children didn't get a graduation, but it's so nice to see these students now that are having their, their regular graduations and proms, and so I wanted to congratulate all the college graduates, and we have high school graduates coming up, too. So congratulations to all of those.
This week.
Yeah. Exciting.
Bob?
So I spent part of my day today updating my calendar, and so I was going to give you a list of things to plan to attend in the next couple of weeks. The dedication to the Union Pacific Railroad, overpass or underpass, depending on your perspective, is June second at eight-thirty. I'll plan on being there. Also, APS is having an energy update for elected and community leaders, June eighth at nine a.m. out at CAC. I'll plan on attending that. And also Larry had asked us to RSVP if we were interested in a tour of Cactus Mine, and I am and I did, so. Things to do.
All right.
Thank you.
And I did want to additionally give a shout out to the Finance Department and really your staff and J.L. This Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Well done. Congratulations.
Very good.
Also, I know Larry's been working on this, this is our, kind of a city culture thing that the staff has put together, and I think it's pretty well done, and I hope we post that on our website for the community to see, because it's, it's a, it's a good piece. And it really is, you know, building a better community, that's, that's what we're about. That's why, that's why we're all here. You know, and stronger, united, so those are just some of the key points. There's a, there's a lot more, but I'm not going to read them all. So. The other thing that I wanted to highlight as well is I was in Washington, D.C. last week, and got to see a lot of our folks back there, got to see and talk to all of our senators, Senator Sinema and Senator Kelly. I also met with Tom O'Halloran on Thursday before I flew out, but all of them know about I-ten widening, and all of them know that we applied for a mega grant, and all of them are pushing for it. So if we can get that three hundred million from the mega grant, then we're good to go, and they can combine the project into one project instead of four, and we can start in 2023 to widen I-ten, so.
You know that area, it probably means McFarland.
I think it's already, I think, I think it's already named after the Pearl Harbor. I think it's called the Pearl Harbor.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah, it's already, it's already got a name. Name the bridge, though. We can quit calling it the Gila River Bridge, except it's on tribal land. We talked about the Chips Act. I don't know if everybody's aware of that, but the Chips Act is a national program to help promote and get our chip manufacturing up to speed, because right now, if you're all aware of it, there are no cars, there's no computers, there's anything that has to do with a chip, we are behind the eight ball. So the government and, and our industry wants to fix that, and it's evident by the, by all of the cranes that you've seen up in Phoenix, especially with Intel, and also with, with TSMC, which is Taiwan Semiconductor. It's like a forty-nine billion dollar project up in North Phoenix, and we are seeing some of those support industries here. I can tell you that there's three for sure, and two other potential, so they are having an impact on Casa Grande as well. But just to give you an example, a new car, a gas vehicle today uses about twelve thousand chips. An electric vehicle uses twenty-four thousand chips. Chips, individual chips. So it's, it's important, and we need to continue to work on it. I did meet with the National Science Foundation, I met with the cybersecurity folks, we talked about even ED two, smaller electric districts, you know, and, and their need for security. So there's going to be some effort here in the state to get with some of the smaller utilities and make sure that, that they're all working together and, and looking out to themselves and working with APSs and SRPs of the world, because cybersecurity is such a huge deal right now. They can take down, they can take down the state just by hacking it. Infrastructure, Homeland Security, Department of Interior, met with the Bureau of Reclamation. We talked about water, Mr. Powell, and your pipe came up in the conversation.
Thank you, sir.
We talked about Department of Labor, apprenticeships, they're huge, the new, the new thing now is apprenticeships. So I'm interested to see what they come out with, because we already are kind of doing that, internships, internships, apprenticeships, but that it's, it's actually now a department back in Washington, D.C. There's a department for everything in Washington, D.C. Met with the Department of Commerce as well, and we talked about broadband, and really their goal is broadband for all, for everybody. So that is the goal. There is five million dollars in planning dollars available for every state, and then there's another hundred million dollars a minimum for every state. So we need to, and I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the board for the state broadband, so we'll be part of that conversation, and we'll actually be out trying to count to see who doesn't have broadband, because that's going to base it on, or basically determine how much additional dollars we get from the feds. So it was a good week, got to see some of the capital. It's hard when you're, when you're in and out of, of federal buildings, and it's like I'm going through the airport like fifteen times, security strip searches. It was pretty crazy. Anyway. This, this Friday, yeah. This Friday, I am, I am one of the panelists on the Panal Partnership Breakfast, which is going to be over at the Florence Library. So if you're interested, it starts at seven-thirty. It's also, I think, live streamed, and it'll be a panel on the Panal Regional Transportation Authority, so should be interesting update. I'll be giving an update. I think the, I think our county attorney will be also part of that conversation. And then we have the Chamber Outlook luncheon this Friday, it starts at eleven at San Francisco Grandi, and I'm the guest speaker there, and I'll be talking about, really about our geo bonds and about our charter changes, so that'll be the topic of my conversation. So that's probably enough. Everybody wants to go home.
Except.
Except for Mr. Powell, he wants to stay for another hour. So you can stay, but just turn the lights out when you leave, would you? Like you're doing right now? All right. Thank, thank you, everyone. Good night. Meeting adjourned.